Mayor, we are live.
Okay. Thank you, Clerk Braniff. I appreciate it. Welcome everyone to our council meeting here at the city of North Pole. Today's date, August 4th already. Can you believe that? Into August, 2025. Thank you all for being here. Thank you to those online. Appreciate that. Clerk Braniff, please call the roll.
Mr. Keller?
Here.
Mr. Brant?
Here.
Mr. Schuster?
Here.
Mr. Jacobson?
Here.
Mr. Williams?
Yeah.
Mr. Claus? Mayor Church.
Mr. Church is here as well. Please stand, remove your hats for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please bow your head for the prayer. Dear Heavenly Father, thank you for bringing us together this evening for the North Pole City Council Meeting. Thank you for helping and guiding us in our decisions this evening and every day. Thank you for watching over our employees, our staff, and our people. In your most holy name, we pray, amen. And if you will remain standing, we will also have a prayer, please, from Father Aiden. Thank you for joining us from St. Nicholas Catholic Church. If you wouldn't mind stepping over here, Father Aiden, to the microphone, so those on YouTube will be able to hear and see you.
Let us pray. In the name of the Father, and of the Son, and of the Holy Spirit, amen. Heavenly Father, we come before you on this day with grateful hearts, acknowledging you as the source of all wisdom, justice, and peace. I present to you the officials of this city and all the residents of this city. Grant to these council members the wisdom that comes from above, wisdom that is pure, gentle, open to reason, full of mercy and good fruit, impartial and sincere. Grant them, oh Lord, wisdom to discern what is right, courage to pursue the common good, and compassion for all the people they govern. May your spirit guide every discussion, every decision, and every plan made in this chamber today. Bless their efforts with unity, respect, and integrity, and may their leadership always reflect your truth and mercy. Send your Holy Spirit upon this council to inspire cooperation, respect, and a deep commitment to the common good. May every voice be heard and every decision be guided by wisdom and charity. Strengthen these leaders with integrity and courage in the face of challenge. We entrust the city of North Pole to you, Lord, asking your blessing upon our city, upon our people, upon the security forces, and all who serve in this great city. Strengthen our unity, protect our peace, and guide all who bear the weight of public responsibility towards peace and tranquility. We ask this through Christ our Lord, amen. In the name of the Father, and of the Son, and of the Holy Spirit, amen.
Thank you, Father Aiden, for the prayer.
And Father, don't feel like you have to stay. We really appreciate you stopping in. You're welcome to, but you do not have to.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, that brings us on to action item four, approval of the agenda. Moved to approve the agenda.
I'll second that.
So moved and seconded, I would like to amend the agenda to consent. Item 12C, the request to counsel for comprehensive IT contract. Second. Any other amendments to the agenda?
Was that Jacobson seconded that one?
Yes.
Thank you.
Clerk Braniff, please call the roll on that.
On the agenda as amended, Mr. Jacobson?
Yes.
Mr. Williams?
Yes.
Mr. Schuster? Mr. Keller?
Yes.
Mr. Claus?
Yes.
Mr. Brant? And Mayor Church?
Yes.
And on the agenda for this evening, Mr. Claus?
Yes.
Mr. Keller?
Yes.
Mr. Jacobson?
Yes.
Mr. Williams?
Yes.
Mr. Brant?
Yes.
Mr. Schuster?
Yes.
And Mayor Church?
Yes.
Thank you for that. That brings us on to action item five. Can I get a motion to approve the minutes from July 21st, 2025?
I'd like to approve the minutes from July 21st, 2025, the regular council meeting.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any adjustments or amendments? Clerk Braniff, please call the roll.
On the minutes from the July 21st meeting, Mr. Keller?
Yes.
Mr. Claus?
Yes.
Mr. Brant?
Yes.
Mr. Williams?
Yes.
Mr. Jacobson?
Yes.
Mr. Schuster?
Yes.
And Mayor Church?
Yes.
Thank you for that. Brings us on to item six, communications from the mayor. It has been a busy past couple of weeks. I want to start off by thanking John Within Power. He stopped by two different days in the last couple of weeks to talk with employees about retirement, benefits, answer questions about your retirements, to teach us about different retirement programs that are available to us. And it was great that he was able to accommodate all of our employees with the couple of different visits. So I want to thank him for that. I attended the North Pole Chamber Monthly Meet and Greet. Those meetings are the fourth Tuesday of every month at the Hotel North Pole. It's a good time to meet the businesses that serve in the North Pole and also do business in the North Pole. Nice to have that here. I attended the FNSB Assembly Meeting on the 24th, I believe it was. Ordnance 2025-15 was a big one about authorizing the mayor to enter into a lease with the Friends of Newby Park. I want to say thank you to the North Pole High School baseball team, coaches, and even the coach of Monroe High School who showed up to testify in support of that lease. I don't know exactly where that's at, but it's certainly resounding by the amount of support that we need things in North Pole for the kids to do. Activity place for us to gather in North Pole, and I hope that Newby Park is the place that we are able to put that all together and make it happen. I attended the Fallen Heroes Memorial Service last Saturday, but I'll let Chief Smith, I don't want to steal your thunder, speak to that more. I attended meeting number three for the 20-year comprehensive plan. There were some new members who came in replacing the old members. We had that at the Morris Thompson Cultural Center. The mayor of the Fairbanks North Star Borough was in attendance. Gave the group encouragement about how important the 20-year plan is and how the 20-year comprehensive plan really does go to affect everything that's happening in the entire borough and throughout the borough. At the same time that meeting was going on, I didn't get to attend, but I hope some of you did to talk about the capital improvement project plan that was going on in open house over at the library at the exact same time. If North Pole doesn't start speaking up about what North Pole wants, North Pole will end up with exactly what it has. So I encourage you to speak up about what you want here in the North Pole area. It's an important process. Last week, I went to Amazon Prime Business School. It's a chance for Amazon to bring us business products and things. It's in an effort to try and reduce the cost of the goods and services and items that we use on the daily here at the city to try and reduce that cost. I have looked at a couple of different options. I'm not sure if Amazon Business Prime is going to be what works for us, but what we're doing now in a couple of different departments is comparing the prices that they have through Amazon Prime plus the cost with our local vendors to see what that difference is. More to come on that. I think that about closes me down from communications from the mayor. Any council member questions of the mayor? Yeah, please. Councilman Jacobson.
In light of your recent comments about Amazon Business Plan, what is your position on supporting local businesses and industries? Because that is a prime employer and driver, and it's not always about saving money, but it's also about enhancing our business connections with local business owners.
I 100% agree with you. I think it's an important topic. I also think in the world that we live in, it's important for us to make sure that we're getting a fair deal. I love supporting our local businesses, and I love the fact that we have that here, but if we're paying 50% more for the items we use every day, that may be disadvantageous to the city. At what cost do we find that breaking point to supporting our local business and our neighbors in their local industry and the cost of everything? I think that there is a line. I don't know where that percentage is, but I do support local business while I look at every other option that's out there.
We do ask our community to pay 5% more to do business here in North Pole. So I think we should lead by example and be willing to support local businesses.
I don't disagree with you at all. Not at all.
Where are we currently getting a majority of our office supply?
Oh, it ranges. CFO Fogarty, do you want to speak on that a little bit since that's more in your realm of the day-to-day?
Quite a bit for City Hall. It comes from OfficeMax, Costco. We do do some Amazon as well. We've even gone to Safeway and bought some things on occasion, too.
We try and spread it around the best we can, and I 100% agree with you, Councilman Jacobson. It's important to support our local businesses. Keep people employed here. It's a big deal. Any other questions?
I have one.
Oh, yeah.
Still, I know we're talking about paper products and copiers and printers. Is there anything else that I'm missing here? Like scanners? Contracts for working on the machines when they go down or replacements? What all's entailed with you looking into like Amazon Business Prime?
Pretty much anything and everything that they would supply, from ink cartridges to paper products, pens, the things that we use on the common and what they want for those compared to what we get through our normal retail vendors that we're using now. I asked, we don't have a department for shipping and receiving here. It's local departments doing local stuff and trying to source that themselves. So I asked those that typically do that task to look at the Amazon Prime, look at the normal vendor, and weigh that cost. One of those employees came to me and talked to me today, and there wasn't a savings at all. In fact, it was double for an ink cartridge that we normally get through a different supplier. So there isn't a savings there, but I think we're doing a disservice if we don't check into that and see if it's worthwhile.
Are there any cases where we've had to have service done to some of our copiers and printers?
Not that I'm aware of.
Okay.
I don't believe in the few months I've been here that we have had any service done to our copiers or our printers, but maybe CFO Fogarty can speak to that, or Clerk Braniff can speak to that. They've both been here much longer, and maybe the chiefs, if you want to speak to your copiers and maintenance.
The maintenance contract, the Arctic Office Products, where they come and they fill the ink up and they fix any thing that breaks, then we get a certain number of copies, black and white and color every month. Generally, there's a form of that for each department. Thank you. I just, one, this is not a question, but observation. Sometimes we can purchase things from Amazon, but then we're going to reach out to our local vendors to come and work on these machines that we purchased from Amazon. So it's, yeah, we, like going with Mr. Jacobson, yes, we could get things for cheaper, but how much is the relationship for the people that are going to come and service machines? There are machines that are more disposable than others, but I think making sure that we weigh in the cost of having those relationships and having 24/7 call-out service, not 24/7 for printers really, but, you know, some help is merit.
Yeah, 100% agree with you. 100% agree. Thank you for that. Any other council member questions of the mayor? Okay, moving on. That takes us to item eight, citizens' comments.
I have not had anybody sign up online today, but any person wishing to speak to an item not on the agenda needs to sign up on the list located on the public testimony table. Respectful standards of decorum and courtesy should be observed by all speakers. Remarks should be directed to the council as a body rather than any one member of the council, and your time is limited to five minutes.
Okay, no one online?
I have no one online, and it looks like no one, yep.
Sounds good. That closes that. That brings us to nine, communications from department heads. CFO Fogarty, let's start with you this evening.
Okay, on Friday, Michelle and I had a meeting with our auditors, just kind of a mid-year check-in, see what's new and what's changing, what we're experiencing. The meeting went very well. And we also, I talked with the department heads and the mayor about starting budget a little earlier this year because we have some new folks that haven't done budget before. But I think it's going to go smoothly. If we have extra time, then we might get done early. That's all I have.
Okay, any questions? Okay. Clerk Braniff?
Okay, so we had four people sign up for candidacy. Dave Skips, Sandra Rolf, Jordan Schuster, and David Brant. If you wish to withdraw, tomorrow at 5:00 PM is the deadline. Otherwise, you can still withdraw, but your name is going to end up on the ballot. Usually creates confusion for voters. All of the clerks from Fairbanks are very pleased that we had four sign up because if we didn't, we would have had to open up all of the ballots and count in all the write-ins on election night, making it a long night quite a bit longer. And that is all that I have to report.
Okay, any questions? All right, seeing none. Chief Smith, please.
Just a couple of things for you folks this evening. First, our officer slot closes the 15th. Just want everyone to know that. So if you're going to get an application, then do it now. We did finally get our two cars from California that we ordered last February, so. Yeah, they're here finally, and they appear to be working well. Some, actually, we had Fallen Heroes this last Saturday. Went very well. Had good weather for it and pretty good attendance for it as well. Big thanks to Rachel Wing and the lieutenant for organization. It's always a heavy lift. For some stats, we've had quite a year in 2025, so with self-initiated, we're up to 4,191 calls for service in 2025. That's both officers going and initiating and also calls being put in. We've had 50 DUIs this year. So as I mentioned in a couple of meetings ago, we see crime trends and things as enforcement has lessened in the last, you know, BHP went away and some of these different efforts have gone away. The DUIs are spiking back up again, so I would expect to see that as a reminder. If you're drinking and driving in North Pole, we are out there and we will find you, so don't do that. We had 2,344 traffic stops, a little over 1,000 citations this year. So we've got some proactive people out there making sure people are driving safe through the town, and we're up to 96 arrests for the year. So our officers are doing stuff. They're not sitting around. I'll take any questions you might have.
Real quick, through the mayor, could you remind us what that program is that you referenced? The BHP?
That was a grant-funded traffic program through DPS, where they had dedicated traffic officers. Actually, shortly after I was hired here, I worked AHSO grant, which is very similar, here for about four years, doing the same thing. So I would imagine if things continue, they're going to need to bring stuff like that. We'll see that coming back.
Yep, thank you.
Thanks.
I had a quick question for the chief, for the mayor. When people are arrested here, where do they go?
FCC, Fairbanks Correctional Center.
Thank you.
Real quick, chief, do you see a trend on these DUIs on traffic or where they're coming from or where they're headed? Is there a common occurrence?
I wouldn't say there's a big modality to pull out of it. You got people coming from friends' houses, from obviously bars and liquor establishments. Yeah. Obviously, we have a couple here, and then the requisite folks coming south on the ridge from Fairbanks at about 4:00 in the morning. So all over the place.
Texture, okay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Okay. Director Glidden?
How's it going? Go for utilities. We have the effluent discharge permit meeting with the Alaska Department of Environmental Conservation on Thursday, August 7th. So we're going to go over our options and see what they think we should and shouldn't do to move forward. Next week, on the 11th and the 12th, we're doing industrial inspections. It's like GVEA and Marathon and those big industrial people that we have in in the city will be going through and inspecting their facilities, so that'll be fun. It's my first first attempt at going in there and looking at all the fun stuff. I'm going to try not to touch anything. So for the building department, the Psalms Boulevard is almost done. Said that before. We're still waiting on the ASBILTS to be drawn up, but we do have the warranty bond. We've received it, so we're good. It's tentatively scheduled to be brought to council to be accepted September 2nd. So event permits, it's been a big deal in the last couple of meetings, so I thought I'd bring some up. We have a family fun day on August 9th from 11:00 AM to 2:00 PM at 503 Kit Boulevard. It's going to be food, music, and games. That permit's been approved, so if you guys want to go do that, you can. And then there's a Dino Dash, Dino Dash, guessing dinosaur was the idea there. 5K walk or run, August 23rd, from 12:30 to 1:30. It's mainly on the Badger Road Bike Path. And that is immediately before the annual food truck rally. So that's being put on by whatever the school is over there. Yeah, Discovery, that's the one, yep. So those are two events that have been permitted recently. So for Public Works, we've got the paving contract going through today. Hopefully. We'll see what you guys think about it. The Girl Scout Memorial Bench is currently drying before final assembly. With all the rain and humidity, it's a really slow process to get the paint to dry, so we're held up on that. The 140 South Santa Claus Lane destruction we have across the street here, we've passed our information off to our police to do further investigations and figure out what we can do and what we can't do. We have one more company, Hawks Construction, that's going to give us an estimate theoretically. They've already come through and walked the property, so that'll give us four estimates of what it's going to cost to repair it. And then the big one is that I'd like to bring up is the Highway Park Renovation Grant. So I don't know if everybody's aware, there's a park, the Highway Park, and we put in a grant back in 2023, maybe, for about $260,000, $70,000 to replace some park equipment there. The grant has been approved. I believe we've actually accepted it also. We just haven't spent any money on it. So I've got some fresh quotes for the equipment that was designed to go in there back a long time ago. So we can do this if we want to. The project must be complete by July 31st, 2027, which means we have next summer to build it, if we want to build it, which means we should buy the equipment this winter. And it's going to be about $160,000 worth of equipment, which has got a 50% match, which means we'll only get reimbursed $80,000 of that. So if we want to keep going with this, we're going to have to spend 160,000 and eventually get 80 back. Um, this winter and then theoretically, it was estimated it was going to cost about 20,000 in labor. To uh, put it all together, but we're going to do as much of it as we can in-house, so it's going to be more of a time crunch than a dollar thing. But for now, if we want to continue, we're going to uh, write a pretty big check to buy some equipment. I just don't know, I wasn't here when it was written and I haven't met anybody yet that feels like we should spend that money. So I just want to see uh, how everybody feels about it. Uh, in the three months I've been here, I've seen one kid playing in that park. Um, but the money is here. Theoretically, we don't have the 80,000 in a budget. Um, so that would have to be some sort of budget amendment to get $80,000 put into uh, the parks. Department for Public Public Works if we want. Move forward. Uh, theoretically, we could do it after budget, I don't know if that's in October, but. Either way, that's uh, 80,000, Public Works doesn't have. Want to move forward, so.
Okay, quiet, yeah, please, Councilman Jacobson.
Uh, I did raise raise this issue at our budget with our chief CFO. Um, we did put some money towards that, but it was not enough to cover the 50% match. So Trish, do you remember, was it 50,000 we have in the budget for that?
I was looking um, uh, with Tim this afternoon and we have about $20,000 left. Um, because it was budgeted with other things. Uh, I did, we did budget for the grant portion, there's plenty budgeted for that, but. 80,000? 50% match, I'm not sure where that was going to come from because we didn't get the grant award until after. Um, until after the budget was approved, so I did do a budget amendment to accept the grant. And have some money for the grant portion, but the where the match is coming from, we'll have to figure that out. And of course, that dollar amount will have to come to the council to to request a purchase also. So I I think, Tim, you're just trying to fill out the the moon tonight, right?
Yeah, yeah, I'm just trying to see before we fill out a bunch of paperwork and bring to you to to try to buy some equipment, if you guys even want us to spend the time. Working on it, I'm just giving you round figures so that you can see, you know, do we have 80,000, do we want to spend?
I would be interested in seeing a plan of, you know, some of the equipment and and things like that.
Real quick, uh, Tim, that was going to be accessible, uh, part two, is that correct?
Uh, that's what the documents say for sure, but I don't know that to be a fact.
If I may, Tim, um, did we have any plans or thoughts as to where we could put? The old equipment that we're pulling that out into another location that we might be able to put up another city park with the? Used playground equipment that comes out of that?
So I talked to Cody last week and uh, he doesn't think there's anything wrong with the playground equipment where it is, and there's enough space there. To put this new equipment without tearing out the old stuff. So the intent so far is to just to leave it there. Um, he really only wants to remove the the tube or the pipe. And there's just a big metal pipe that he would like to get rid of, but um, the rest of that equipment should fit.
Could we, could we move the pipe? Sorry, no, 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 please, to the skateboard area, they're always looking for things to jump on and scrape.
Yeah, we definitely could.
And and the plan as design that you're showing us here is is the $160,000 for all of this equipment?
Yeah, there's the swings, the big uh, equipment and then that little. It's so it's it's based on age, it's so it's up to five years is the little one. And then five years and up is for the bigger one. But yeah, it's it's 160,000 uh, delivered, not assembled.
Right. We'll have to start. Councilman Jacobson.
It, yeah, even though you said that you've only seen one child play there in your three months here. Um, Terry Miller Memorial Park is very full with families using that. I think if we were to do these upgrades and also let people know about it, promote it more, there will be more use of it by families to go to another location besides the the crowded Terry Miller Memorial Park, which has. Equipment that is in need of repairs and updating too.
Is for sure, there's um, the parking at the um, this other park, there's maybe enough room for two cars. So I don't, I don't know how many people would travel over there for it, but yeah, if there was newer equipment, I'm sure kids would get their parents to take them over there.
But do you just tell us where Highway Park is? I know it's down off of Homestead, but it's Homestead and what's the cross street there back behind Ford Subdivision? Does anyone here have that information? Sorry, I didn't mean to put you on the spot.
LaSalle?
LaSalle, maybe? So it's down off of Homestead, so if you live in in Fifth Avenue or Ford Park, you would go to Homestead, follow that bike path towards the old Richardson. And it would be there on your right. Um, even though it's not in Ford Subdivision, it's it's fairly close. I mean, a five minute walk, a three minute bike ride, um, for most people, you you'd you'd be there. Um.
Mayor, there actually is, it is used quite a bit in the summer and from residents of Ford Subdivision. Yeah. Can I make my suggestion? The $20,000 in labor, um, maybe reaching out to local scout troops to see if there's anybody that's a life scout right now, looking for an Eagle Scout project. Uh, being an Eagle Scout myself, I was always looking for what could be a good, good project. Uh, or just a service organization that'd be willing to come in a couple of days to put the equipment together, have it a community event. Of course, have someone torque wrench it, make sure it's all together correctly, but.
Right.
I think to kind of spread the wealth and bring the community together, um, rather than just putting it in into the the laps of of your department. Now, let's have the a great opportunity for us to come together.
Yeah, that would be great. We had uh, football coach um, from Hawks, I think it was Hawks when he was here, looking at uh, this place across the street. He was asking if we had any projects for his football team to do.
Funny thing, you should say something about that. About sports and and fundraising, uh, I I think you're onto something.
Madam Clerk, if you wouldn't mind, I don't know if you can zoom in on this, if I hold it up so that those people who aren't here, is that?
You just, yeah.
Okay, we're going to try something new here.
Ben and White.
There you go. There we go. That's not terrible.
Got your nails painted.
Not my style, thank you though, gentlemen. Okay, enough of that.
So so yes, the 160 would cover all three of those pieces of equipment. Um, so if we did buy those, we don't have to buy those ones, obviously, but if we did buy those ones and then it did cost about $20,000 worth of our labor to to do it, we would still theoretically have another 80,000. Um, next year that we could do other upgrades to that same park. Right, uh, if we wanted to put some lights or, you know, we wanted to to update the, there's a little roof area and a picnic table or, you know. There is a basketball court there, which would be kind of neat to have some lights on it or something. Um, but we could figure that all out next year theoretically, after we know what this specific stuff is going to cost.
Is four square a thing anymore? Okay, any any other questions from Director Glidden or for Director Glidden?
So if anybody's got input, whether they want to move forward or not, you can contact me.
Yes.
Um, I think you've got three yeses over here.
Sounds good.
Santa says yes.
I'll I'll follow that as well. I I think it's a worthwhile investment into our neighborhoods, into our children's um, future and into a great place for kids to play. We need more of that in the city of North Pole, so thank you for taking that on and making that happen.
Yeah, so I'll try to uh, to get a memo for the September 2nd because uh, I'm leaving Tuesday next week for the rest of the month. So I'm going to miss the next August uh, council meeting, but I'll try to have something for this by, you know, the September 2nd, I believe.
Councilman Kelly, go ahead.
So switching gears here, uh, how many building permits are currently out there right now?
Man, I deleted it from.
No, that's okay, so I have I have a follow up question. At what point do they need to have a building permit? Before they break ground, before they bring in gravel, what at what point?
Yeah, before before they start doing work, yes.
Okay, so any improvement upon the land?
They should come and talk to us, they don't need to get a permit to dig a hole.
Okay, all right.
Right, uh, there, but they could, if they have plans beyond digging a hole, they should be talking to us, yes.
Okay, perfect, thank you.
Yep.
I have a question, um, you said it's 160 for all three pieces of equipment, what about like that is putting the rocks and stuff in in square off the ground?
That that's just uh, a design, that that wouldn't be how we would put it together.
All right.
Right, um, I don't know who drew that up, I would imagine to the the people that make the the toys drew that up. So um, that 20,000 in labor is is including uh, concrete and um, things like that. But it doesn't, I don't think have anything with gravel, so that would be, that would have to come out of the extra 80,000 that we would figure out uh, next year. But we didn't, we wouldn't have to order that ahead of time.
Any other questions?
We could get more in-depth drawings and a better idea of what it's going to look like finalized. Uh, we just want to get this ordered if we want to install it next year before the funding. Because it, July 27th, we're not going to be able to do anything by then.
Director Glidden, if we were to order this in early January, do you feel like that would be enough time? Because then we could stick it on our on our budget through our budget meetings and have that ready for next year. Would that be enough time, you think, to get that received?
I have that question put out to these guys.
Okay.
So uh, when I get a response, I can, I can let you know.
Wonderful, thank you.
I'll I'll have that information before I come and ask for the money. Okay, we can decide if it needs to be this or next.
All right, thank you, Director Glidden, um, that moves us on to Chief Heineken.
I love that. Hopefully they're tired. Good evening, everybody, um, yeah, just a few things from the fire department. Um, so last week, the fire department um, completed its ISO inspection and uh, I would like to speak a little bit about that because. Most of you probably are familiar with our ISO inspections, but some of you may not. Um, so ISO is the insurance service organization and uh, and they are an organization that that their whole purpose is to grade fire departments. Um, currently we have an ISO 2 grading, um, which is a tremendous grading, especially for a city our size. Um, the grading system goes from one being the very best you can be to a 10 being there is no fire department available. Um, so and within each grade, you know, there's, you're either strongly into it or you're barely holding on to it. And we've, we've been, you know, a safe two for the last two inspections. So inspections come every five years, our last one was done in 2020. Um, and we maintained our two um, very competently at that point. And uh, the last few months, um, myself and Chief Chambers has been putting a lot of data together. Um, it's a very data driven type of inspections, so for the two months, we've been putting data together and actually emailing it off um, to the inspector. And then the inspector shows up um, for three hours, she was here for three hours last Wednesday, um, went through some of our stuff, some very common questions they ask. Looked at our equipment, looked at our station, wanted to look at our staffing. And um, and I felt when she left, um, that we uh, performed very well. Our our increased staffing in the last five years should definitely be um, an increase. Um, I don't foresee us, I'm no false hopes, we're not going to be a one. Um, it'll take a couple of months for them to get back to us with what the final conclusion is. Um, but I'm fully confident that uh, our ISO rating will remain in that two level. And uh, you may ask if you don't know, what does it matter? And what does it matter what our number is? Um, well, it's the insurance rates that um, that are being set on properties in our city that that matters for. Um, so insurance companies have the ability to um, to purchase this information from ISO. And that's what they use to determine, you know, what your insurance rates will be. And from my understanding, especially commercial high value properties, it is, it is a big deal um, with being a two. So um, we're, we're happy it's over, it was a couple of months of of preparing for it and I'm glad it's behind us for another five years. And uh, we'll see, I'll I'll definitely, you know, be reinforcing you once we get the results. But I'm confident enough that I'm willing to sit here today before that, that uh, we should absolutely have done just fine. On other news, um, again, myself and Chief Chambers have been working the last few weeks um, with PCG, our contractor, finalizing our SEMT application. And we got it submitted to the state last week. Um, everything went well there, we had to get some information, questions back and forth several times over the weeks between PCG and us. And uh, and CFO Fogarty here and providing valuable data. So the estimate that we've come up with for the, it's the calendar year 24, um, SEMT is what we're looking at. It should be around $268,000 is what we're estimating to come back to. So um, we'll know early next year um, from the state when we get stuff back. Um, if, how close that number is, but the the first two that we have done prior, um, were pretty close to what those estimates were, so pretty confident. So um, just for information purposes, um, calendar year 23 was $228,000 in that ballpark. And then our first year when we did it in calendar year 22 was um, right around the 304,000 mark. So um, it dropped down that second year and it looks like we've, we've gained back up about midway again. And and as I've told you all over the years since we've started this, this is what we expect. Is, you know, it's, it's definitely going to dodge around over the years because it is so driven on. It's it's Medicaid driven, it's 100% Medicaid driven, so it it really is dependent on how many Medicaid patients our ambulance is actually treating within our city. Um, so there might be some years where we have a high volume of Medicaid patients, there might be some years where it's low volume, so. Um, so those those fluctuations are what I expected and I'm actually pleased that they're not more drastic, so. Um, stay tuned for more information on that too, I'll let you know as it, as it comes through. Um, then the final thing is, uh, the Apprentice Academy is going great. Um, once again, very happy with this year's apprentices. Um, this morning, um, the academy is, I can't believe we're already into August and we're going this fast. Um, but they they uh, performed live fire training out at Ileson Fire Department's Training Facilities today. And they'll be back out there tomorrow and Thursday doing more live fire training. So um, these apprentices are already to the point that that they've got the skills that we're actually putting them in an environment. Um, to fight real fires inside of a contained vessel. Um, so they're very competent already, they're growing rapidly every day. And uh, we look forward to getting them through the academy and getting them assigned to their shifts, so they'll just keep growing. I expect it to be um, pleasing, just like it was last year with the first uh, group that we had going through, so very pleased with that. And that's all I have this evening, I can take any questions.
Please, Councilman Brant.
So we haven't seen you since the open house. Um, and I did go to the open house and I just want to say that there was a couple of the apprentices that were giving um, tours, if you will, of the the fire trucks and the equipment and showing everybody how how everything worked. And at that point, they'd only been on for about a week, I think.
Yeah.
And I got to say, I was really, really impressed with them. Either they learned a lot in that week or they're really good BSers or or both.
That's good, that's good to hear because they're both good skills.
Um, but anyway, I I was very impressed with your apprentices, so.
Well, thank you very much. Any other questions? Thank you, Chief Heineken, appreciate that. Moves us on to ongoing reports, Clerk Braniff, do we have any ongoing reports?
Um, we did not, was there a report from the borough representative?
I was the borough representative and I I don't have much to report other than uh, what I touched on. Um, Councilman Brant was also at that meeting, is there anything, Councilman Brant, you want to speak to about the uh, the meeting that you were at there?
I would just like to thank Ms. Wilson for all the hard work she did on that that lease. I I thanked the mayor afterwards, um, and he said, no, it was, it was all Tammy. He just, just signing it, so um, she really did all the heavy lifting on that and I want to thank her for that.
All right, thank you for that. That moves us on to unfinished business, which there is none, moves us on to 12 new business. Um, I would like to. I would like to introduce this ordinance, please. Uh, twenty twenty-five dash oh nine, an ordinance title nine of the North Pole Municipal Code to add a new chapter prohibiting solicitation from the occupants of vehicles. Second. Alright. Thank you, Councilman Jacobson and Councilman Williams for the seconds. That moves us on to a staff report. Um, Chief Heineken, would, would you like to just take lead on a staff report? Then maybe we'll slide the mic down to um, Chief Smith and let him give his two cents as well before we get going here.
Yeah, absolutely. Um, yeah, so this ordinance, it comes after actually multiple years of concerns for public safety. And then this summer, um, again, we've seen, um, concerns where we have organizations that are well-deserved organizations that, uh, are fundraising, that we really want to support. But we've noticed when fundraising, they're interacting with motor vehicles in traffic, um, specifically the roundabouts is where we usually see them. Um, so this ordinance, um, was talked about, um, over the last several months and refined to make sure that we're, we're giving the opportunities that they need to fundraise, but to try to eliminate the safety hazard from it. Um, and speaking from the fire department, as I said before, at meeting of the whole, we, we will acknowledge that we set the example that caused this with, with fill the boot. Um, it's, we see fill the helmet, fill the tennis shoe, fill the jersey, those type of mimicking events. Uh, we will acknowledge that we were the, the trend setters in this, unfortunately. Um, and with that knowledge, uh, we have discontinued the practice of fill the boot in North Pole. Um, to try to set that example that maybe we should not be doing fundraising this way. We want to support these organizations. Um, we're hoping that they will, um, see the value in this and, and find other ways to do it. Um, and the, the one comparison I would probably make this to, this was heart-wrenching decisions. I mean, with these organizations, we don't want to tell no. Um, but if we think about in, you know, in the last several years, there's been a big trend in parade rules where we had tragedy occur at local parades in our borough where life was lost. Um, and they eliminated the throwing of candy at parades. Um, I was devastated. I love throwing candy at parades. I did it for my whole career. Um, to tell me I can't throw candy was horrible, but when we look at if we would have, if we would have set that rule prior to those tragedies, um, you know, where would that family be now? Um, so I'm hoping that's what we're doing here is, is we're setting the rule before the tragedy. Um, because we do see toddlers and, and young people out interacting with traffic at these fundraisers.
Thank you, Chief. Chief Smith, do you want to, would you like to? Now, I hope I'm not putting either one of you on the spot, but thank you for, uh, for that.
Yeah, obviously we support, uh, the organizations that are taking part in this. We just want to make sure that folks are able to do it in a safe, a safe manner. Um, as the police department will be tasked primarily with, uh, communicating this ordinance to folks. It's important the public knows that we're going to seek to inform first. Um, and, and make sure there's a graduated approach to what has become very commonplace in our town. Um, I understand that it takes time for people to adjust and adapt to doing it a different way. And so um, if this is approved, you will probably have a polite contact by a police officer explaining to you what the ordinance means and giving you some options, um, to, to conduct business more safely.
Okay, thank you for that, both of you gentlemen. Um, Clerk Braniff, do we have anyone signed up for public testimony on this?
I have nobody signed up for public testimony, uh, online. Is there anybody in the audience that wanted to speak to this?
Okay. Uh, council discussion, any questions about the ordinance concerns? Yeah, please, Councilman Brandt.
As for Chief Smith, there's already state statutes on the books that would prohibit this. If you're going to be, already going to be going to them and contacting them, why do we need an ordinance for this when you could just state the, the state statute?
Because there's not a state statute that addresses solicitation from a vehicle. There's obstruction of a roadway, and it's nobody's intent that's doing this to obstruct the roadway. So there's no, if there's no intent, then it doesn't fit the statute. The people out there are not trying to obstruct traffic. That's not their goal. However, they are doing so as a byproduct of their, uh, their work. And so this specifically addresses the exchange of money between a pedestrian and a vehicle.
If I may.
Yeah, follow up, please. Councilman Brandt.
So, Title thirteen Alaska Administrative Code, uh, oh two point one eight oh, pedestrian soliciting rides or business states that no person may solicit a ride in a manner which distracts a driver's attention, nor may a pedestrian upon any roadway solicit employment, business, or contributions from the occupant of a vehicle. That's the exact thing that we're doing with this ordinance, so it's redundant in. So that's why I'd say I don't think we need the ordinance if we have a state statute that, that specifically says the same thing.
If, if I can take this, um, we have our, our attorney, our city attorney online, um, River Stern. Um, would you mind speaking to that statute and maybe if Councilman Brandt would go ahead and, and repeat that statute number?
It's AAC oh two point one eight zero, pedestrian soliciting rides or business.
And would you mind, um, Mr. Stern, uh, chiming in on, on the concern and the discussion about this?
Sure. Um, I mean, as I think that Councilman Brandt's concern is well-founded, and I appreciate the diligence in, um, finding the regulation. I think the idea here is to be as specific as possible, um, with respect to the conduct that the city is actually trying to regulate. Um, I think that the state reg is perhaps a little bit, um, broader or, or less narrowly tailored. Um, and I think, at least with respect to my review of the ordinance, um, we were really attempting to be very mindful of First Amendment constraints and try and make this as, as sort of narrow of a regulation as possible to address a very specific problem. Um, so that's my two cents. I think I, I certainly understand the concern for redundancy and, um, I think this is just, um, given North Pole's home rule status, I don't think there's necessarily, um, a downside to, to uh, passing a even more specific ordinance that is, is targeting, um, a narrower subset of conduct. So that would be my two cents.
Thank you. A follow-up, sure.
If I, if I may, um, they say almost exactly the same thing. Notwithstanding any relevant provisions of state or city law, no person shall occupy or enter any public roadway, roundabout, sidewalk, median, right-of-way, or other traffic infrastructure within the city of North Pole to engage in solicitation from occupants of vehicles. Um, the state statute just says that more succinctly. Um, I don't see any difference in, in the two. That's just my opinion.
Thank you. Yes, Councilman Jacobson, please.
Chief, so, uh, to enforce a state statute such as this, your officer would contact this individual who's violating state statute and what, issue a citation? Or what would they do?
Both enforcement would look essentially the same because our, we can equally enforce state or city ordinance.
But to, in, in order to enforce a state one, what do you, what does your officer have to then do with the court system?
The same thing we do with the regular city ordinance. We issue a citation.
And then you have to go to the courthouse and appear?
Yeah, for both of them we would.
For the, the city fine, you have to appear for a five hundred dollar fine of violation of a city code?
They still have an opportunity to contest it. Yeah.
So they are, when we issue a citation, we appear in court?
Yes. If it's a contestable citation, a violation.
All of our title twelve.
I've been unable to pull that up on short notice. Does it have the word, "may not distract" in the state statute?
Just if I could chime in, for, for what it's worth, the state reg is specific, I mean, the language in terms of, um, location is upon a highway. Um, so this is quite a bit narrower, um, and we don't use the word distract in, in the ordinance that, that we're considering here today. Um, just for what it's worth.
Thank you for that. Uh, please, Councilman Kelly.
Uh, I was just gonna ask, uh, Mr. Brandt to re, reread the, the AAC number, just so I got that right.
Zero two point one eight zero, pedestrian soliciting rides or business.
Okay, so according to AKleg.gov, which has the disclaimer, not official version, but no person may solicit a ride in a manner which distracts a driver's attention, nor may a pedestrian upon a highway solicit employment, business, or contributions from an occupant of a vehicle. Um, so therefore it, like, I understand, uh, like you not want to do two things, but if we want to have it specific for any roadway in our city, I think this is something that we need to, to work towards.
Also, I would just say, since the language is "which distracts", we would have to essentially prove that there was a distraction, just like we have to prove that reckless driving actually caused someone to take evasive action. It would be slightly more than just a per se offense of they exchanged money that violated, violated the ordinance. We would have to show usually by the complainant, a complainant, a driver saying, "I was distracted by this activity." So this is, this is much, a much broader statute, and ours is very, very narrow.
I agree with that.
Any other? Oh, please, Director Glenn. I love it.
I just have a question. I don't, I don't know. Is, is this going to affect the driver that's paying also? Are they going to have to pay a fine? Because what they're doing is just as illegal as the guy standing there, right?
So, I, I would say from the layman's stance, I, I, yes, but Councilman Jacobson disagrees with me. I'm not an attorney or a lawyer. Um, you know, I, I'd like to stay on point with this. Um, the, the object of this is safety for our kids and our residents who are out there. I, I know that it got brought up about infractions and tickets, and I would hate to see that happen. Um, I, I always love to see compliance over any sort of ticket-riding notice given, and I think if there's good communication between the parties, we can find a way to move forward. And, uh, you know, we love to support the, the nonprofits that are there. We just want the support to happen in a safer, more productive way. And, uh, we're gonna strive to make that happen for our kids, for our local nonprofits, and for our community. We are a strong community here in North Pole who takes great care of our local nonprofits, of our kids, of our kids' teams. Um, but like it was mentioned before, safety is, is the true issue here. So.
If I may, Mayor, I've, I've never said that safety was not the issue. I'm just saying that this is redundant with state statutes. There's also in Title twenty-eight, um, AS twenty-eight point thirty-five point one four oh A says, "A person may not purposely obstruct or block traffic on any roadway by any means." So that, um, that negates your concern about the word highway. Um, and, and so all, all I'm saying is that the, our officers are going to be contacting these individuals, and whether or not they, they cite another ordinance or a state law, I would think a state law would hold more weight than I, I just think adding another unnecessary ordinance is, and I appreciate where we're going with this ordinance and why you're, you're doing it. But I'm saying there's already laws on the book that prohibit this behavior. I don't think we need to add another one. That's, that's all I would say by bringing that up. I never said anything about not being concerned about the safety of our children.
No, 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 I know you didn't. Um, I, I want to thank you for that. And, and I'm going to direct your comment to our attorney. Um, River, do you want to chime in on what Councilman Brandt, um, just brought up? And maybe he can read off that statute as well. Um, I know that we went back and forth while you're looking for that. Go, go ahead, Councilman Brandt. If you want to read that statute one more time for our attorney, and then I'll give my quick blurb.
It's AS twenty-eight point thirty-five point one four zero A. "A person may not purposely obstruct or block traffic on any roadway by any means."
So while he's looking that up, I, I want to say that, um, we went back and forth on this with the attorney. Um, I actually drafted this ordinance, um, and we talked about it, I think, in two different staff meetings. Um, presented it to the attorney. The attorney looked it over. We had a great discussion about what we should put in here and what we can't, um, based on First Amendment rights, Second Amendment rights, and in every other right, uh, known to man. And this is what we came up with. Um, as a concern of our, our two biggest safety departments in our city through the police and fire, and their concern for this. Um, River, do you want to go ahead and take that mic?
Sure. Yeah, I'm, I'm happy to, to answer that. And I think, again, Councilman Brandt, I do really appreciate your, um, diligence. Similar, uh, to the point that was brought up by the police chief earlier, uh, with respect to, you know, with the regulation, you have the necessity that, um, you know, in issuing a citation or enforcing that regulation, you need to show that a driver was actually distracted. So in a similar way here, the operative word of purposeful makes that statute have a different effect than the proposed ordinance here. Here, there's no, um, requirement that somebody be intending to obstruct traffic. The, the ordinance speaks to the conduct of standing on a median or, um, entering the roadway, regardless of what your intention is. If you do the action of trying to get money from somebody from a moving car or, um, a car that is in the road, um, that's what this is specifically addressing. So that state statute is speaking to, um, you know, attempts to obstruct traffic, um, which is a slightly different, um, sort of subset of conduct. While there's perhaps overlap, I wouldn't say that they're really a one-to-one, um, sort of mapping on top of each other in that way. So that would be my interpretation.
So with the Alaska statute, you have what's called mens rea, which is your mental intent, right? And in criminal, that's can be several things knowingly with criminal negligence, um, these types of things. You have to be able to show that there was a mens rea, an intent versus what we have here essentially is what's called a strict liability offense, just like speeding. When you go before the judge to contest your speeding ticket, his only consideration is whether there's probable cause that you were speeding. Your intent doesn't matter. It's a strict liability offense. And so the proposed ordinance is, is the same type of thing. It doesn't require a mental state. It's a strict liability offense. You do the action. That's the probable cause for the violation.
Well said.
Any other comments or discussions on this ordinance? Yep, please, Councilman Brandt.
So under accept, um, exemptions here. Organized fundraising authorized by the city of North Pole pursuant to a written permit issued under yada, yada, yada. So we're saying this is really dangerous thing. We don't want people running into the roadway to solicit money unless the city authorizes it and gives them a permit. So it's either dangerous or it's not. Should we be getting, giving permits for this if we're saying that it's dangerous? And that's a reason for the, I, I would just strike that exemption completely.
So if I can take that, um, so the idea of a written permit was discussed at our staff meeting, and the idea behind the written permit was an opportunity to was an opportunity to educate those nonprofit groups about the rules and regulations that we have and about how we would like them to interact with the moving public so that there isn't an issue. It's sort of the last line of defense before sending out law enforcement to educate them. It's a proactive, premature education for them so that they know the rules going forth. So that they can set themselves up for success rather than hand to car money exchange. Oh, yeah, please, go ahead.
I understand exactly why you want to issue a permit and everything, but by saying that you're exempt from this provision, if you have a permit, then that means, from my reading of, then if you're exempt, that means you can do the action that, that we're trying to prevent. So all I'm saying is, I don't think there should be any exemptions at all when you say that there's lawful protests and other public speech activity on public property that does not involve solicitation. Well, this whole ordinance is about soliciting money. So when we say if you're not soliciting money, you're exempt from it. I don't think that needs to be in there either. So I would just say to strike, to strike the exemptions from, from this ordinance.
So if you desire to strike that, Councilman Brant, if you want to make a motion to strike that, please do so.
Yeah, I move that we strike the exemptions from this ordinance.
Second.
So moved and seconded. Any discussion on that? Please, Councilman Keller.
Chief Heineken, did you have a comment?
Yeah, I just wanted to, I guess, give what my impression was of us leaving the exemption in there. Probably under no circumstance would, would a permit be issued for that exact function. It was more for the unusual event. Let's say that we have issued a parade permit that actually closes a street. You know, and, and there's things going on at that that would be a fundraiser. There'd be no question that they could fundraise and solicit, you know, fundraising in a bigger trying to say how to say that, in a bigger event where that's just a subsection of the event, it might be applicable. I mean, we're just trying to imagine outside the box, things down the road that would come up that we would go, oh, well, that's, that's outside of the intent of this. So, so this is my interpretation of it. The, the envision was that they would never issue a permit for them to do that exact function, to stand out on the side of the roundabouts and enter traffic, doing fundraising for a local sports team or a local Lions Club. It would be incorporated into that bigger permit.
Thank you, Chief Heineken. Oh, please, Councilman Brant.
And I completely agree with everything you just said, but like I said, that, that means why are we including this as a possible exemption? We're never gonna allow it. So why put it in there as a possible exemption?
Okay. Thank you, Councilman Brant. Please, Councilman Jacobson.
I speak against the amendment. I think it's been very clearly established by our chief, by our chief, that we are trying to be keep the door open for unforeseen events where use of the street might be, including solicitation, even though it may be blocked off for the event. So this doesn't close the doors on future events that we have. I think the ordinance itself is more of an educational tool and very specific to our situation here in North Pole where we're seeing an increased amount of solicitation in our roundabouts, in particular in our, in our city. Title twenty nine, the state statute sets the minimum powers and requirements of municipalities, but municipalities have the power to go even stricter. And that's what we're doing. We're being very laser focused with solicitation in our streets rather than the generic language that you're referring to. So I think this is more helpful and clarifying to have it just the way it is. But also leave the door open. So in case we do have a street fair where someone can't quote and say, well, you, you don't have a code that supports that. Again, it's the what if scenarios, but again, it's just kind of leaving the door open for what happens in the City of Fairbanks when they close it down for Golden Days Festival, things like that.
Any other comments?
Yeah, my only comment would be, I agree with both things, but I, to Mr. Brant's point, if you're reading this as a booster, you think, oh, I'll just go down and get a permit, you know, and I think it's just, it's kind of confusing the way it is.
Then we could say, instead of soliciting in the roundabout, you can have signs saying, go to this next parking lot and pull in and give money. That's allowable. And the other thing, don't fundraise, you just can't get money during passing cars.
Sorry for the interruption. I apologize. It was brought up in our staff meeting that QR codes are a real thing. And you can print those QR codes off as big or as small as you want and stand out there and hold that sign and, and maybe snap a picture. I know it's sort of the exact same thing, and both chiefs are telling me it's a horrible idea, but I want to support fundraising in our city. I want our kids to be able to afford the sports. When you're talking about football is seven hundred fifty dollars a year. That's crazy. Those kids have to earn that. My, my boys both played football and they went out mowing lawns. They went out doing random jobs throughout our entire city of North Pole to gain that money. It's expensive to travel on road trips to Kenai and to Sadatna and to Anchorage and to West for our soccer, football, basketball, and volleyball teams. We're, we're not here debating the cost and the expense of that. We're just asking that we do that in a safer way. And with that, if there's no further discussion, is there any further discussion? Please, Councilman Brant.
I just want to say, I appreciate what you're trying to do with this ordinance, but I think this whole ordinance, this whole issue could be dealt with, with a letter to the principals of our local schools. So they can pass on our concerns to the coaches and the boosters clubs and let them know that it's not acceptable to be soliciting from the roundabouts. The cross-country team, they hold up signs directing people to Beaver Books parking lot for a car wash. That's perfect. That's what we want them to do. This ordinance isn't gonna encourage that. A letter to the schools and the booster clubs and the coaches will. And if we have to do that at the beginning of every year, you know, school starts up next, next week, let's just write a letter to the, the schools and tell them our concerns. They can pass along to their coaches and boosters clubs and hopefully it won't be an issue this year. Putting this, another ordinance in the book isn't gonna, isn't gonna fix the issue. I think a little education will, will fix the problem that you're trying to fix with this ordinance.
Okay.
All the question.
On the amendment to strike out exemptions from ordinance twenty twenty five zero nine, Mr. Schuster?
Oh.
Mr. Williams?
I say keep it in.
That's a yes? Or?
No.
No, okay, thank you. Mr. Brant? To strike, okay. Mr. Keller?
No.
Mr. Jacobson?
No.
Mr. Claus?
No.
Mayor Church?
No.
That amendment failed six.
No order, real quick. Can we have a request to change your vote? Mr. Mayor?
Yeah, would anyone like to change their vote? Okay.
Sorry. I just wanted to make sure.
Thank you, Councilman Keller, for calling me out on that. I do appreciate that. So on the overall motion, please.
On ordinance, an ordinance of the City of North Pole amending Title nine of the North Pole Municipal Code to add a new chart, a new chapter prohibited, prohibiting solicitation from the occupants of vehicles. Mr. Brant?
No.
Mr. Claus?
Yes.
Mr. Keller?
Yes.
Mr. Jacobson?
Yes.
Mr. Schuster?
Yes.
Mr. Williams?
Yes.
And Mayor Church?
Yes. Would anyone like to change their vote?
That passed six to, six to one.
Thank you. With that, that brings us on to item twelve B, request to council for a paving contract. I'd like to move to introduce the request to council.
I'll second it.
Okay, with that, that moves us on to a staff report. Director Glidden.
How's it going? So the, the city advertised an invitation to bid for the twenty twenty five city paving contract. We, we sent out invitations to seven contractors and we posted it on our website. We've received two bids by the bid date, and both were qualified. Both bids met all of our standards. And through reading the two bids, we recommend going with HC Contractors' offer. They had the most cost effective proposal with the lowest price per square foot for asphalt paving at fifteen dollars per square foot. The next closest bid was sixty dollars per square foot, so it's substantially less than that. They are actually the contractor that got the contract last year too. So we are confident that they can do the work. So our recommendation is that you accept. And we move forward with giving them a contract.
Thank you, Director Glidden, for that staff report. Clerk Braniff, do we have anybody signed up for public testimony?
I have nobody that signed up online. Is there anybody in the audience that would like to testify?
Okay, seeing none. That moves us on to council discussion.
Ooh, can we vote on that?
Move to award the bid to HC Contractors.
Would you like me to take a roll call, Mayor?
Please, please hold on. We haven't had a chance for council discussion. I'm happy you're trying to move the meeting ahead. We all would like to get home, but, but let's have, any council members have questions about the contract for the Director of City Services?
No questions about the contract, but I do remember last year, a couple of the roadways were open for a long period of time. And so I don't know, is there anything in the contract this year? You know, a certain timeframe that I think they cut, last year they cut some roads open, and I think it was open for a month probably before they paved.
I believe we did address calling it a reasonable amount of time. I can, I can look into it.
I may speak to that just a little bit. I did talk with the HC apprentices that ran around last year. They were over in Ford subdivision and I just happened to be out walking the dog and got a chance to talk to the apprentices that were working on our street and how that worked and went. I know that their attempt was to try and pave and patch all of those in the same day to reduce labor costs so that they could go from one spot to another to another, which left the prep work out there for longer than we really would have liked. I know at Crossway and Parkway, there were two by fours that were set out that had to be traversed. And it did make travel difficult. I know down on Fifth Avenue, we had the same thing for a while. It's difficult because we want to try and save all that we can. And sometimes to do that, we have to make sacrifices and unfortunately leaving that out there. And then we hit a week of rain, I believe, which caused all those to get beat out again, and they had to go back, add more material, recompact to the inch and a half or two inch levels, depending on where that paving was done. I believe that we can talk to HC Contractors and, and request that on those main thoroughfares and those connector roads, Ms. Director Glidden, if you wouldn't mind asking our contractor if this is approved, if they can try and do the subdivision roads compacting cutouts first before taking care of the main connector roads. Last year it was backwards from that. And I think that that would be helpful for the general traveling public to not have to traverse those. I was in a small Subaru car and the two by fours in the road on the abrupt edge wasn't very nice. But certainly HC does great work and, and I think with a request that they'd be able to fulfill that to the best of their ability. So thank you for bringing that up, Councilman Schuster.
Any other questions about the contract or discussion about the contract, Councilman Keller?
Mayor, in G of this, towards the end is the entire agreement. And there is some exceptions in there due to scheduling. As far as I can read it, in the middle of that, except as herein otherwise expressly provided. No contemporaneous, excuse my English, or subsequent agreement, understanding altercation, altercation, that'd be funny. Alteration, amendment, and change or addition to the schedule, blah, 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 shall be binding upon both parties unless reduced to writing and signed by both parties. So to me, Mr. Director, I think that gives us permission to go ahead and award this with the understanding that we come to agreeing that both parties sign an exemption to that schedule. Cause yeah, last year it was, I'm having flashbacks of awarding the two by fours. So yeah, if you could spearhead that for us, that'd be fantastic.
Oh, yeah, absolutely. That, that was brought up when we were talking about this from Public Works, that that was an issue and we're gonna, gonna work on it. So.
Thank you.
Any other questions, discussions? Clerk Braniff, please call the roll.
Okay, that was firsted by Mayor, seconded by Mr. Williams on the memo to council for the twenty twenty five paving contract. Mr. Jacobson?
Yes.
Mr. Schuster?
Yes.
Mr. Claus? Mr. Williams? Mr. Thank you. Mr. Keller? Mr. Brant? And Mayor Church?
Yes. Would anyone like to change their vote? Thank you on that, Councilman Keller. I appreciate it.
That passed with seven yeses.
Okay. Clerk Braniff, that brings us on to council comments. Where shall we start this evening?
This evening, we shall start with Mr. Brant.
All I have tonight is that I did go to the CIP nomination forum last week and unfortunately, I'm the only one that, that showed up. Not just from here, but the entire night. So there was eight very dedicated borough employees sitting around in circles staring at themselves until I walked in and I felt like they were very happy to see me. Like the mayor said, said earlier, if we don't speak up, we're not gonna get anything here. The CIP process is very competitive. There is a lot on there. But if they don't know what we want, they can't give it to us. So I did have them specify that it has to be a borough asset. So let's say we nominate them to fix up our dog park. We can't do that because that's not owned by the borough, so it has to be a borough asset. But it's not too late. We have until August thirty first to put in our nominations. You can just go online. It's a very simple form to fill out. It says on the borough website, FNSB.gov slash CIP dash nomination, and those nominations are open through August thirty first. So I promise them that I would pass a word on. That's it.
Thank you, Mr. Brant. Mr. Keller?
Yes. I think tonight's meeting was very productive, covered lots of things, and I am excited for the future with talking about Highway Park, Park. I think there's a lot of potential there, not just with new equipment, but revitalizing the area and getting the community together to help with putting this park idea together. Excited for the fire department and hearing how the results come back with ISO classification. Hoping that gives a little bit more fire for us to get things going even more for the fire department, the new firehouse. Which is really exciting to, to think about. With the ordinance twenty twenty five oh nine, I think we had a healthy discussion pertaining to fundraising on roadways. My thought is, is I think we've gotten away from fundraising with a purpose. Let's, let's get back to offering services for fundraising. The other day, it was super nice out and I'm trying to think of why there wasn't a car wash. You know? Or services. I think it'd be fantastic. If we can't get a service organization to help with the park, have the football team come over and help put the equipment together or have the hockey team come over and help put the equipment together and help with that kind of funding. There's more, there's more opportunities in building communities through other activities than just panhandling on the side of the road. And that's really what it is. Are we, what are we trying to teach our youth? Is that they can have a hat out and get money or go out and, and do something? I like Mr. Mayor's comments about his sons going out and doing yard work and, and other things to earn money. I'm pretty sure they respected their time on the football field and baseball field a whole lot more than other kids that didn't have to do that. Time and time again, I've seen that in my life where if you had to put blood, sweat and tears into something, you reverenced it and you actually protected it even more. And I think that's something that will happen with the highway park as well. If we get the community together, it won't turn into trash because people have been invested into it. So I, I'm looking forward to what the future holds. There's a lot of good potential, even things that we haven't talked about tonight. There's really good things coming down the pipeline, pun intended maybe, with what North Pole has in its future. And with that, I pass.
Thank you, Mr. Keller. Mr. Schuster?
I don't have anything tonight.
Oh, thank you, Mr. Schuster. Mr. Claus?
Uh, thank you. Kudos to our department directors and our attorney. It's nice to see the department directors and their staffs move things along, do the research on the day-to-day stuff that the city has to accomplish. It's also nice to see a council constitute in such a way that we all kind of get along and have healthy discussions, productive discussions, without the contention that we see so many other places. So my thanks to everyone and to our general public and our constituents. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Claus. Mr. Williams?
I'd like to say ditto on what, everything everybody said. And I, and to me, our department heads is where, where they hit the ground and started running. Because those guys really much, to me, got everything squared away and we don't have to ask too many questions because you guys done thought about it and, and brought the information in there to us. And it makes our job easier, I think, to us. And that's all I got to say.
Thank you, Mr. Williams. Mr. Jacobson?
Thank you. I'd like to thank Councilmember Brandt for representing the city at the Borough CIP Open House. I hope all of us will take it to heart to look at that and nominate projects for our North Pole community by October, August 31st. I'm also very grateful that the borough did approve the Newby Park lease to the Friends of the Newby Park Group. I wasn't able to attend since I was delegated to being the taxi driver, taking people to and from the airport that evening, but I did work behind the scenes with the mayor and others in the organization to see that there were folks that would be testifying on our behalf to be there. And thanks to Representative Wilson for her efforts in getting that resolution before the assembly. Just as, as a reminder, the city of North Pole does not have parks and recreation powers, so we have a limited agreement with the borough that allows us to operate outdoor facilities at Terry Miller Memorial Park, at the Super Memorial Park, and also at HIPPO, which is the Highway Park Playground Organization. So when you think about moving equipment to another location, just realize that unless you have it in writing with the, with the borough, we cannot open up another park in North Pole without an agreement with the borough allowing us to, to do so. Because since we don't have, we've surrendered our parks and recs powers to the borough. Also, I'm very thankful that we have four qualified candidates that are running for North Pole City Council. After nearly a quarter century of elected office service to our community, I decided to take a, a pause, hopefully, to be able to spend more time with my family. There have been some growing needs in my family that I want to spend more time with. So I, I did not put in for a reelection. So again, I'm thankful that we do have four good folks who could fill those seats and move the city forward in the years ahead. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Jacobson. Mayor Church?
Councilman Jacobson, I would like to start off by thanking you for your dedicated service to the city of North Pole, all the time that you spend here. Your name is on the, and picture are on the back wall while you were teaching school and you have been a source of wonderful information for our city and a great history for our city. And I appreciate your efforts. Tonight, I would like to also thank you for your work in securing funding for the new deck that overlooks Beaver Springs over at, over at Holiday Heights. If you haven't had a chance to make it over there, it's an ADA, an ADA deck that looks over Beaver Springs. And that's wonderful for our seniors who live in our community, who can take advantage of that. So thank you for your dedicated service. I know that you do a lot, even in your retirement, between Newby Park, the, the Holiday Heights, taking care of our seniors through your church and everything else that never makes it out to, to the public as far as knowledge. Your efforts are greatly appreciated and I want to say thank you for that. Thank you, Mayor. A quick notice, I mean, we are in August already. Public school is starting August 19th for the students. And I'd like to just say I'm sorry to the teachers and welcome them back as they go to school. I believe that their first session is the 13th. They go back in, in an open session where they meet at the Herring Auditorium, all of them together. So I, I want to say, I hope you enjoyed your summer and thank you for your dedication to making our students better. My dad was a school teacher for 20-plus years and I appreciate the dedicated service that, that they give. Couple pieces of information, the Alaska International Games, the Senior Games, starts this weekend at Pioneer Park. The opening ceremony is between three and six, as has been in the last couple of years. They're coming out to Terry Miller Memorial Park to throw shoes, which will be a lot of fun. You don't have to be super old. Just a few years away from being able to join the Senior Games, as scary as that is. Their age limit is 50. Scary. I want to say thank you to the world's biggest backpack. I wasn't able to attend, but this Saturday they threw quite the shindig that brought a lot of people to our town. And thank you for their dedicated service and making sure that our school-aged kids get what they need to be successful. And I can't support that program enough and, and mention the good things that come from that program. So thank you to them. This weekend was a very busy weekend for everybody and there was art in the park, North Pole edition, out at China Lakes. I don't know if anybody was able to attend, but, but thank you for that. Thank you for bringing that to North Pole in general. This week, there's a couple of change of commands. Fort Wainwright Commander is transferring out. I believe that's Wednesday. Also, the Alaska Air National Guard 168th Commanders are transferring out. So I'll report more on that as we go. And next week, I want to let all of council know and staff know that the Alaska Defense Forum is coming to town August 25th through the 27th. If you are interested as council members and would like to go, let me know and I will make sure that we get you a ticket. The only thing that I ask is you try and attend everything that they have. There's a lot of information. I thanked Mayor Clack last year for asking me to attend. Councilman Keller, I believe you were there as well? Yes, no? Somebody else was with me. I don't remember exactly who that was, but thank you to Mayor Clack for making that happen. And if any council members would like to attend this year, I, I would love to set you up with tickets to attend that. That's August 25th to the 27th at the Eight Star Event Center. And if you are a business and you would like to attract your business to or from the military, they have a vendor's booth and vendor's table. You can pay a nominal fee, set your business up, hand out cards, meet a lot of upper echelon military members with PACAF who are, who are going to be in our town for this forum. I would like to thank Home on the Grange and John Poirier. While this meeting is happening, they're having their meeting, talking about local topics. And on Monday at seven, Monday at six? Every Monday they do a Home on the Grange. I'm sorry I got the time wrong or right, but look it up. Home on the Grange, Put On By, By the Grange. Councilman Keller, I saw what you did there with the pipe, pipeline. Kudos on the pun. I love that sort of stuff. And I would like to thank Father Aiden for taking time out of his day off to come down and give the invocation. I think it's important that God be brought into this building and that we as community leaders and staff are prayed over for peace, diligence and strength as we move forward doing our job. So any local church leaders, pastors that would like to come and give invocations over our council, over our city hall, over our staff members and those attending, please reach out to me. I'd love to have you. With that, I think we're done and I would like to move to adjourn. I'll second.
And we are adjourned at 8:38. River, thank you again for hanging in with us.
My pleasure.